It is now 4:00 p.m. I am calling the St. Louis County Committee of the Hold to Order, April 16, 2021, 4:00 p.m. We are going to be discussing the St. Louis County Evictions and subsequently Bill Number 111. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb?
Here.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and I want the council members to know that I did hear from Councilwoman Trachis. He is tied up with something at the moment, and he is hopeful that he will join us later on in the conversation. The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. And as a point of introduction, I really want to thank you all for joining us here on a Friday afternoon. This is a very important issue, and the thought that we needed to address it as soon as possible. We are making every effort to get both sides of this perspective. It is extremely important, pros and cons on both sides, but we as a council need to come to a balanced approach as to how we handle this. So we have in no way tried to eliminate or stall or stifle any kind of conversation with this. We do want to make sure that we hear both sides of the situation. We have at least 10 public comments, and I've counted and I stopped earlier on, but we have at least 10 public comments. And I do have a list of panelists that have wanted to participate. And one of them was Hope Whitehead from the Justice Department Judge Burton's office. She will not be reporting this afternoon, so there may be, Councilwoman Clancy, to your point, there may be an opportunity for one of the people that you wanted to speak in that place, okay? So we'll see if that's allowed, if Chris can, if you have, give Chris the name or whatever, however he brings them up or whatever he has to do with his technology there, and we will accommodate that, all right? So we will start off with Andrea Jackson Jennings, who is the Director of Human Services. And Andrea, you will talk to us about the monies that we received from the federal government, your process that you went through, where are we in this, and who's allowed to get this money? Those kinds of questions, I'm not sure if the entire council is aware of that, so I think a little background information would be helpful. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. As stated, I am Andrea Jackson Jennings, Director of Human Services. I have with me today Yusuf Scoggan, who's the Director of the Office of Family and Community Services. Chris, can you start the PowerPoint, please? And thank you for affording me an opportunity to share with you what we've been working on for the last several weeks. Next slide. So as you may be aware, back in December of 2020, Congress passed and the President signed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021, which provided $25 billion in emergency rental assistance through the CRF. It was allocated to the state, county, and local governments, who could provide assistance to families that were facing financial hardships through financial, I'm sorry, rental assistance and utility assistance to preserve housing stability. This program is not used for mortgage assistance. Next slide, please. This is just some additional background work. The funds are coming through the United States Treasury, who will oversee and administer the rental assistance program. It was awarded to cities and counties with more than 2,000 residents, and the funds generally will be available through December 31st of 2021. Next slide, please. So what is ERAP, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program? It assists those families, as previously stated, with arrears, rental, and utility assistance to low and moderate income households. St. Louis County received $29.7 million in federal funding to distribute to the residents of St. Louis County. This slide illustrates the ERAP eligibility requirements, and I won't read them all, as you have them before you. But first, one or more of the individuals, in order to qualify, need to be unemployed, receiving unemployment benefits, or have experienced a reduction in household income. On the other side, you will see the eligible households may receive up to 12 months of assistance, plus an additional three months, so that's a total of 15 months. We will be using 80% AMI. Nan McKay was the third-party administrator that was awarded the contract back on Friday, March 19th. We went through a competitive bidding process, and we received five proposals. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates the scope of work that Nan McKay has agreed to provide St. Louis County. This slide illustrates the eligible expenses. Also, it can take up to 21 to 30 days for processing. That's from beginning to end, so the payment goes out the door. Next slide, please. Thought it would be helpful to illustrate the flyers that have been circulating to the community stakeholders. I know that we printed some for Councilwoman Webb, as well as Days, and we wanted to make that available to the other council members as well. It's also on the county's website. Next slide, please. Thought it would also be helpful to just show you the process, or explain to you the process, how to apply. There is the website that's listed there. It asks for your demographic information. It's easy to apply. You can use a computer, desktop, laptop, smartphone, or tablet. Next slide, please. On the county's website, you also have a process, the application process, step one through step five. Takes about 30 to 45 minutes to complete the application if you have all of the information. This slide just illustrates the phone number, the hours of operation, as well as if you need some additional information, you can contact us. You have a live person from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. The program implementation timeline, we had a soft launch on March 29th. There's the phone number, as well as the hours of operation. On April 5th, the application process commenced, and as of this afternoon, the dashboard was implemented. So what we've done, we've decided to have a priority list, and there were 21, a little over 2100 applicants that did not get served with the previous award. So we're making them priority. Could you go back, please? Okay. And then second on that priority list would be the 605 individuals that were on the docket to be evicted. And then we've had the additional individuals to apply through the website. We have several community partners. Chris, that list illustrates the community stakeholders and our partners. We've been working with county courts, nonprofits, county public works, as in addition to workforce development. We know it's imperative that those individuals who are needing support get linked up with workforce development and job services. Next slide, please. And this is the daily stat sheet that we get from Nan McKay. We started the process on April 5th, and this report goes up until the 14th. I just received about 20 minutes ago the most current stats. So as of yesterday, we received 600 and, I'm sorry, 1,623 applications. Okay, go ahead. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to Yusuf, who will speak to you about the community resource coordination.
Thanks, AJ. Thanks, council persons. So in executing this program, it's very critical that individuals have local partnerships to which they can provide outreach, as well as guide folks through this resource engagement. And to that end, we are partnering with a couple of large nonprofits here in the area to help facilitate that, not only outreach, but also case management that is necessary. We also know that there are language barriers that are throughout our community, and we want to ensure that those challenges are addressed to help folks navigate that, and also in terms of application assistance. There are documents that do have to be submitted for this application, so the process in obtaining those documents, as well as the submission of such, can be challenging. This is a federal requirement. We have minimized the level of documentation that might be required, not to exceed what is federally required. And to that end, our nonprofit providers are assisting us, ensuring to make sure that the application process is as smooth as possible. One of the checkpoints, too, with this process is the two-fold interface. So as applicants put forward their information to apply for this assistance, they're able to identify where their application lies in the process for payment. They're also, Nan McKay is also able to tell us on a regular basis how many of the applications are still outstanding in terms of information. And that's where we want to make sure that we connect our local nonprofits to make direct and intentional outreach to those households to ensure that if additional supports are needed locally to help them complete that application, that can be done. So that's been a critical element. Eviction prevention is really critical, not just because we have these resources, but the most important component is that once these resources go away, if we don't do a good job with these resources now, we have a flood of folks who will fall into homelessness. And so we do know that there, in working with the courts, there are several individuals that are at risk. I'll just give some examples, some data points. On an average month, a little short of about 1,000 households are addicted in St. Louis County courts, subject to eviction execution. And given the fact that they've been dependent for approximately a year, that would amount to approximately 10,000 to 12,000 evictions in a year. The data's a little shy of that this year, because I think there are a number of supports that have been provided, whether it's CARES Act supports, or additional stimulus as executed at the federal level, and also additional unemployment benefits. So there are a lot of elements and variables that go into the support of these various households. But even with that being said, there are those who we knew were at imminent risk. And AJ mentioned there were over 600 households that as of April 5th, when the county courts resumed execution of the eviction, were at imminent risk of losing their residence. And we know that the majority of these households are family. And so working with some nonprofits, some advocates in the community, they did make some intentional outreach to those households to ensure that those individuals were both aware of the program and this resource, and how it might be able to salvage their housing situation. And the majority of those households were occupied. Approximately 90% were occupied, and the majority of which were family. Many of them, as seen here on this map, are concentrated in areas previously described as underserved in a variety of ways, and were also experiencing hardship prior and during the pandemic. And to that end, we wanted to ensure that as much outreach as we could provide was then conducted. We plan on this being executed on a ongoing basis as well, as we want to make sure that we impact the community to the greatest extent possible. Why is this data important? It's not just numbers or dots on a map, clearly. It's your constituents who are in significant pain and hardship. I'm sure you all get the cause, and to the extent that these resources can connect with those households, that is what our nonprofits and our third-party and our offices are intending to do. But I wanted to also provide a little bit of context around how tenuous the situation is should just a small percentage of those who are at risk fall into homelessness. The Regional Response Team, which is a body of a number of providers, organizations, and key stakeholders, funders, and creditors throughout the region that has really been attempting and supportive of coordinating many supports around vaccines and otherwise during the pandemic, has been helpful in disseminating information to 6,800 households who we know are most at risk, either because they have been served with an eviction notice during this time. And if every one of those households was a single-person household, which we know that is not the case, the majority of our households in county are more than one person. If only every household was a single-person household, and only 5% of them were subject to eviction and lost their residence, what that would do to our overall homeless capacity system that would be required to support them and provide shelter for them and their children is that our shelter capacity would have to double almost overnight. And that is only if 5% were to fall into eviction. That's why these dollars are so critical. That is why they're at many levels are so important. We are convening and having a conversation, coordinating not only at the state, as was mentioned during the first committee of the hold that kind of briefed on this subject about the resources at the state, but we also have been working with local utility companies as well to ensure that all dollars that can support households are maximally deployed and not a dollar's left on the table. Because once these dollars are gone, we're going to really feel the brunt of it. And so I just wanted to impress upon the committee about some of the partnerships that have been occurring during this time, and how that is being navigated, both in the now and also into the future, and how many families. I would go into speaking to specific household circumstances, but I will brief on time. But I thank you for your time today.
I think it's also worth mentioning, Yusuf, that we've been working with the Apartment Association, as well as the Realtors. Can you touch on that just a little bit, please? Yusuf, can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely. I believe after the first committee of the hold, we gave a presentation to the landlord and apartment association to make sure that they were fully aware of the program. That convened regional bodies, both St. Louis County, St. Louis City, as well as the state MHDC, to ensure that local landlords were aware of this resource. Because it is not just the tenants that are suffering hardship, it is also the landlord. And to the extent that the support would help one, it would help all. And so that outreach has been very supportive, and that is also one of the metrics that we are evaluating when applications come in, is was the application initiated by the landlord or the tenant? And that lets us, that gives us an indication of the level of outreach and the touchpoints that maybe we need to continue to explore. Additionally, we are working in partnership with the library system as well. That is another point of reference for folks to connect and obtain access to the internet to ensure that application submission is as easy as possible. So these are just a few of the partnerships that we are navigating, both at the court level as well. Every summons that goes out, subject to an eviction, there is information provided that outlines this resource and how to apply. That is, again, a critical element. So I think that covers some of the bases of what we're doing, but I'm sure that there'll be some questions.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the department has completed their presentation.
Yeah, I was just going to add to what Yusuf mentioned, that the library is even open to extending their hours to assist those individuals who may be challenged with coming during the normal business time. Also, when you get an opportunity to look at the PowerPoint presentation that was forwarded to each of you prior to, pay close attention to the numbers, and look at the numbers that we've received from landlords. We just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Harder.
Yes, and anyone can answer this question, whoever knows. What was your numbers of your anticipation of how many people or how many units of housing are subject to eviction in the next 30 to 60 days?
Yeah, I think when we looked at the case data, we had over 6,000, I think, households and working with the courts that we know are in peril. However...
They're in what?
Are in peril.
They're in what? I didn't hear that.
They're at risk.
Oh, in peril. Okay. I just didn't understand you. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think, you know, Councilwoman Harder, one of the issues here is that there are many variables involved in this eviction situation we're facing now. And that we had resources being deployed last year. There were additional unemployment benefits that were provided. There were moratoria that were in place, and so some landlords may not have filed immediately. And so we may see an uptick in that, subject to any moratorium not being in place. And so there are so many variables that are in place as far to get an exact number. What we do know is that we've had a considerable increase in number of calls, both to the United Way needing assistance. That increase has gone up by more than 50%. And our CARES Act funding, indeed, would have over 5,000 applications that were submitted. We anticipate, just based upon the first couple of weeks of applications, that we will get well north of 5,000 applications. And our average assistance request thus far is close to $5,000 for a given household. And to the degree that that calculates out, that shows you how all of those dollars will be exhausted, probably subject to the number of people who are eligible to apply. Based on probably another month and a half or so, we'll have probably nearly 5,000 applicants that are new applicants. That's not including, again, to what AJ mentioned, the people that were already in the pipeline. The need is enormous.
So the, yeah. So the people that were already in the pipeline, say, three months ago and back to last March, and that are probably still in the arrears, or they caught up based on the previous funding sources?
Those who were assisted previously, they were assisted maximally. The assistance guidelines that were outlined under the CARES Act dollars allow for up to nine months, because that was the period of time from April through the end of December. And so they were attempted to be maximally afforded. Assistance wasn't given, and folks would still be in arrears. So for those who could be assisted, that assistance probably covered them for that period of time. However, hardship remains, and there was a significant group of individuals who were not assisted. And that accounts for that additional over 2,100 that are first in line and being assessed now for that access to that assistance now.
Okay. And is there means testing to this? Or is this just, they just have to prove that they don't have a job, or they can't pay their rent? Or what is the, and is there any requirements to do anything while they're claiming these benefits?
So there are the federal guidelines, subject to who is prioritized for this funding. So first and foremost, 80% is the maximum AMI, but we want to focus on those who are very, very low income, and that is 50% of AMI. So income is one criteria. Certainly, individuals have to submit documentation proving that they have had a loss of income and that their need is substantial. And so there is a program guide that we developed with Nan McKay that outlines the structure of this program to ensure that all the necessary documentation from a federal standpoint and otherwise is supported. AJ mentioned earlier, the connection with workforce development. And certainly, we know that the majority of households who are falling behind who need this assistance have lost income in some way, form, or fashion, or have incurred additional expenses, subject to having to take care of their children at home because of schools being closed, additional costs around food because their children weren't in school. We have a number of our area school districts in which many of the students are receiving free or reduced lunch. And to the extent that that impacts households' bottom line, that's significant. And so all of that documentation helps to support why a household may need those resources going forward. So it's...
Yeah. If someone fills out the paperwork online, or in person, or on the phone today, and they get it all right, they've got everything they need, how long does it take to get a check? And does the check go to them, or go to the landlord for the arrears period that they're missing the rent?
Yes. From the time of application to the time that payment is to be made, we have approximately a 30-day window. And so Nan McKay is working through those applications to ensure that that happens. to ensure that that happens. Just second question, I didn't recall. Could you repeat that?
Yeah. How long it takes to get that check, if all the paperwork is in place today? But I, from what I've been hearing is that, you know, people are not used to navigating these systems, so they're missing a piece of data, or they're missing a paycheck stub, or they're missing whatever, and they kick it back, and then that starts to cycle all over again, and it delays the money coming through.
So the, the way that the application is, is set up, they're, fill out the initial demographic. There is additional supportive documentation that they may have to provide. And upon the completion of that, approximately twenty-eight days from there, the, the payment should be out the door. Payments are made directly to the old entity. So that may be the landlord or management company for which rent is due, or it may be to the utility provider, such as Ameren or Spire or another utility provider. And so that is the timeline. The key element is, if documentation is not received, they are given a notice and a reminder and connection with our local nonprofits to make direct and intentional outreach to those households, to ensure that we can provide rapid, as rapid as possible assistance to get that information in, so that that payment can be made, is ultimately what the connection with the local partnerships intends to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah. Yusef or AJ, thank you for being here today and for providing this information. I know much of this is on your website as well, so folks can go back and look at the details online. I did read in the paper yesterday, an attorney who represents some of the landlords saying that the portal wasn't working. The data you provided, I think, suggests otherwise, but are you aware of any complaints about the portal not working?
Nothing has been brought to our attention.
Okay. I hadn't heard anything until I read a story in the paper either. And then the other question I have is, is the landlord disqualified from receiving back pay if they have, if they have evicted a tenant through this program?
Yes. So the, the goal of these funds is not just to pay arrears, but it's to keep people in place. Displacement of individuals is not the goal of this program. It would be counterproductive to not only these resources making that maximal impact, but ultimately other resources and also the trauma associated with that displacement.
Got it. I think that that's an important point, to understand the incentives that are built into this program, that I think are of mutual benefit, both to the landlord and to the tenant, because the ultimate goal here is to get the resources out the door. We know that landlords are struggling. We know that tenants are struggling too. So thank you for providing that clarification.
Any further discussion? Let me, let me ask you, because I, I received information about, and of course, you did answer about the website. Everyone does not have access to that. So you did provide a telephone number. Thank you very much for that. You also provided for a person to answer the phone and to assist these people. That is so critical. But in going to the website, I, I understood that it was supposed to be on the county's website. I understand that it is on there somewhere, but it is really difficult to get to. So if you all could look into that, and, and, you know, going through several, several areas to get to the, what is that, that eviction prevention form that, that the courts have there. It's a little difficult to get to. That's my understanding. So I'm not sure if you're in charge of that, or how does that work, but that is clearly something that, that folks need to make sure that they have. And council members, I want to also remind you that we are asking these questions in relation to bill number one, 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 which is on the calendar that we're discussing at this particular point. So, so we need to make sure that we're referencing that when we do that. Any further questions for Andrea or for, from Yusef? Any other questions at this point? I do know, thank you very much, Andrea, that you have to leave. So this will be your last opportunity to answer questions. So, so anybody else?
And, and might I, the meeting that AJ has to attend, I have to attend as well. So I'm, I apologize. I have to leave early this evening.
Sure. On a Friday afternoon. Right. You have meetings. Thank you.
We had this one.
Meeting at home.
Hey, hey, it's okay. It's all right. It's okay.
He's probably off on Monday.
Councilwoman, let me just make sure I understand. Are you referencing the CDC declaration? Is that the document that you were asking about? Yeah, it is. It's on the, it's on the court's website. It's not on our website, but it is on the court's website.
It was supposed to be put on the county's website as well. That was my understanding.
Okay. We'll make sure that it happens.
In case people don't get the courts, they can get the county or whatever. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. We'll make sure.
Last call for, for the department. All right. Thank you so much, and enjoy your weekend. And then thank you so much for coming in on a Friday. I really appreciate that. I hope you get at this particular point. Was supposed to, we least, we thought that she was going to be there. Mark, I understand that you've had some conversations that you want to share with us at this time?
Yes, just for the good of the group, I talked with Judge Burton yesterday and invited him to this meeting. He respectfully declined. I asked for someone else from his department. They also respectfully declined through his direction. So he didn't think it was proper at this point and to comment on, on this. So we just need to, I guess, move on without that commentary.
Okay. Well, I have also been in contact with some people over at the, at the judiciary and, and had a little information that I was not aware of in terms of how these things happen. And, and so for the last year, it seems that they have about six hundred evictions in queue. That's what I've been told, that they have, that's, and that's the people that the landlords have submitted for evictions. I was under the, under impression that, you know, once you get to the court, then you're, then you're, you're out. You're just out. And that is not the case. The sheriff, in the last two days, the sheriff has received two hundred evictions from landlords. And, and so those are people who, who are ready, are ready to be evicted. However, when the, they are presented with that form that I just mentioned from Andrea, from the CDC, that immediately stops. So there's no evictions once you get this little form here from the CDC. You, you fill that out and, and, and it stops at that particular point. So to that end, I've been told that there have been only six evictions to this point that, that have been, have fully gone through. But I also understood that once you get there, that it's not an automatic, that, that the court, when the courts have to take the people who are potentially going to be evicted, then they have to go back and, and they send the landlord some information, and then they have to work together with the landlord and the tenant to come up with some kind of resolution to that. So a lot of that, I was not, I was not privileged. I didn't know anything about that, because I thought that was, that was it immediately. You were the courts and that's it. And so there is some reprieve there. But I think more important than anything, we want the folks to know that the eviction protection declaration is what is needed at this point in order to stop, stop an eviction. So with that, let, let's go to David Forth. He is with the St. Louis Apartment Association Legislative Committee.
Ma'am Chair, before-
Sorry.
Councilwoman Fitch. I just wanted, if you didn't mind, add a little bit to, I did talk yesterday with Sheriff Scott Kiefer, and most of what you talked about, he relayed to me as well. The other thing I wanted to add that you didn't mention is, I actually talked to him about the process. So they have a sticker they put on the door of the home that's going to be evicted. It goes on a minimum of five days ahead of the eviction. So the tenant knows that it's coming in, in five days. And it's got the actual date on there. So what I asked the sheriff was, one of the complaints or one of the comments we heard when we had this discussion Tuesday night, and I don't remember which council member brought it up, is that there are people that have no access to the internet, that there are people that can't get to the CDC form, that really just don't know until the sheriff shows up and knocks on their door and puts them out. And that's just not the case. They all know, unless they completely ignore the sticker on the door. So what I asked the sheriff was, is, is it possible, if in addition to the sticker, that they also post something from the Department of Human Services, if they could provide something like that? And I think we just heard that in the summons, it also has information for help, so they can obtain resources to help them prevent the eviction. But could, in addition to that sticker from the sheriff, could they provide information to that tenant that says, by the way, here are resources? And then that clock starts ticking. He said he was interested in doing that, providing that additional information at the time they placed the sticker on the door, if the county councilor's office would approve that, because they are the legal guidance for the sheriff's office. And unless the county councilor had some opposition to it, that they would be happy to, again, give them information. So I think from what we heard, especially from Dr. Shroggins and, and AJ, is that there are plenty of opportunities to get this information to these, these tenants, to get them the assistance that they need. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you. Just one, just one second. And, and AJ alluded to this, and I had flyers printed up for my district, both for landlord and for the, for the residents, so that they would have these forms, they would have some information that they could, they could look up for that. Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to that, because I was the one, I think, who brought up the equity issue at the meeting on Tuesday night. I don't recall Councilwoman Fitch saying that, that the first time people were hearing about the evictions was when the sheriff showed up at the door. My point was, is that we know that many of the folks, as we saw on the map, when you look at that map and overlay it with a lot of other outcomes in St. Louis County, that map is likely aligned, again, to folks that probably don't have very good internet access and other issues that they're dealing with that could make it hard for them to navigate this. And we need to be really careful to not duplicate efforts. So if our Department of Human Services, our council members, and community organizations are going out to get this information to tenants, whether it's the CDC declaration or the, the information about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, I wonder, and I'm curious, if it's really a good use of our sheriff's time to also be doing that as well?
Madam Chair, if I could respond?
Absolutely.
Uh, they're there anyway, Councilwoman Clancy, to put the sticker on the door. That's what I'm talking about. They could provide the information. And I think providing the same information over and over and over is not a bad thing, as long as it's consistent. At least we know they're getting the information, because I think all of us agree, we want to do everything we can to make sure that they're aware of the resources that are available to them. The last thing that any of us want to see is them put out on the street. I don't think anybody wants to see that. However, we also have to keep in mind that there are people that have invested their life savings in these properties that they are now renting out. And many of them are mom and pop. So I think it'd be neglect on our part to not do as much as we can to make sure that they've got the information. So I have no problem with duplication, as long as it's the correct information that they're getting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And consistent. Anything else? Anyone else before we go on to David Forth? Anything else? Mr. Forth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you to the council for allowing us to appear and express some thoughts and some information on this very important issue. I am a member of the Legislative Committee for the St. Louis Apartment Association. I'm also an attorney. I've been practicing twenty-three years, primarily in real estate and landlord-tenant law. So this is an area that is near and dear to my heart. And, and you also see on your screen there Katie Roberts. She's the president of the St. Louis Apartment Association, and she's a vice president at, she's the vice president at Van Rop Properties. I know she'll have some comments to add to mine as well. If I may, I, I, there have been a number of, of comments that were just made that I, I would like to address. The, the first is the issue of notice to, to tenants. I, I just want to make clear that these tenants, the first time they hear of this eviction is, as I believe, as maybe Mr. Fitch or Mr. Harder stated, it's not when the, the sheriff shows up at their door to change the locks. They, they have gotten, in most circumstances, they have gotten, in many cases, numerous rounds of demand letters from their landlords. They have gotten served with a summons initially at the filing of the petition. So they have gotten served with that. So they're very aware of that, and they've gotten at least thirty days notice of just the court date itself. Then the court date comes, many times the cases are continued. And so you've got multiple, you know, layers of both notice and timeframe. So these are not happening. In my experience right now, through the COVID period, most cases from my filing to taking a judgment are at least ninety days. At least ninety days. And that's kind of the, I'll say that's, at present, that's kind of the speed of light, because it's just things are operating slowly. So, so there are months of time built into there and multiple rounds of notice that these people are getting. In addition, in every circumstance I have seen, and, and I handle these both in the city and the county and in St. Charles, and in, in every circumstance in which a tenant has appeared on a docket and said, I would love information about where I can get additional help, either the court will provide that information. Usually the judges have lists of that information. Very frequently, I will give them that information. I will steer them to the various websites, because of course, as a lawyer representing the interest of landlords, we would rather avoid extensive amounts of vacancies in properties. And if we can get people funding to help them get through this, that helps everyone. So those are some important things to frame this from the perspective of. The, the critical piece, the bill that you are considering tonight, bill number one eleven, this bill actually works directly against everything that you are trying to do. Everything you're trying to do. This bill appears to be something to protect people from evictions. That is not what this bill does. What this bill does is it disincentivizes people from paying their rent. It also disincentivizes them from going out and getting assistance. I, I hear probably once a week from a resident, they say, I ain't paying a thing. I don't care. I'm not paying, and I don't care about assistance. I don't care about any of that. I'll leave when the sheriff shows up. So I hear that all the time from people. And by putting this in place, this actually does not encourage people to either A, work out payment plans, or B, to go find assistance, because they don't believe they are in any jeopardy of being removed from the property. So they literally, so this actually undermines everything. All these assistance programs we're talking about, this goes directly against it. They have no reason to do it, because they're, they're sitting there saying, well, I've got, under this plan, I've got until at least June. I've got to June. I don't need to work out a payment plan with you, Mr. Landlord. So it goes directly against that. And I'm sure you guys have had many conversations about the constitutionality of these kind of provisions. I will tell you, I, 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 as a lawyer, I remain, and, and I have had this debate, both with the presiding judge in the county and the presiding judge in the city, over these eviction moratoria, as to the underlying constitutionality of them. I believe they violate the due process clause, they violate the takings clause, they violate the contracts clause of the U.S. Constitution. There are so many fundamental rights that are being run over by moratoria like this, that we could sit here all night and debate that. So those are just, I would say, some philosophical issues. I will just direct you, section one of bill number one eleven, if, if, if you take that out and look at that, something really struck me as I read that. It says, no landlord, owner of a residential property or other person with a legal right to pursue eviction. So just think about that. You are passing a bill that says, we're about, upfront, we know you have a legal right to do something, but we're telling you right now, we're going to stop you from that. So we admit in section one, you have a legal right to it. So that really struck me. Some other things, as, as you contemplate the underprivileged, the low economic circumstances- the low economic uh, circumstances of many of the people that this ostensibly is intended to help. Uh, which, uh, let me step back. Many of the landlords I serve, I serve landlords who own properties in some of the most economically depressed areas of St. Louis. And I have a grave heart for the people in these areas. And I look at this, and I look, for example, at the definition of covered person under section 2. And specifically under that subsection 2, the income level. I cannot believe that we are covering somebody, we are exempting them from eviction because it is a couple making $198,000 a year? Are you kidding me? I can't even believe we would be considering that. Uh, you know, that, that's hardly economically disadvantaged. And I, I, I look at that and I really question it. A couple of other things I can tell you, and I'm sure Katie can speak to, is that, you know, when you get down to subsection 4, for example, that they're using their best efforts to timely make partial payments. The number of tenants that I see who have paid zero literally for all of 2020 and now all of 2021 is very common. That we're, we're not talking about people who are sending in, you know, their rent is $500 and they're sending in $50. They are paying zero. They believe that they have a full exemption on paying any rent and that no one is going to make them pay their rent until a sheriff shows up, and then they will happily leave. And they will, the money will never be collected from them. So the, it is uh, the idea of some kind of best efforts question there is um, is, is, I won't say laughable, but it is um, I, I, I don't think it's actually relevant here in most of these circumstances. And frankly, what I would rather see is somebody who represents landlords, if we're carving out these kind of descriptions to a covered person, is that specifically, if you are somebody who has not paid a dime of rent, that's not, uh, that is not a best effort. Is that pay something to show some kind of effort there. But to just have it vaguely described as best efforts is um, hardly, hardly satisfactory. The um, a couple of other questions that I would pose. I, I don't, I'm, I know I'm not here to ask you all questions, but there are a number of questions that I would pose. Um, I, I, I would direct you, it's a very important, I, I believe it's a, an error in this bill. And that is section 7, subsection 2. So section 7 says, nothing in this order precludes eviction based on a tenant, less than your resident. So basically carving out an exception, saying you are allowed to evict people. I will tell you upfront, I was very glad to see this. Because initially, the order in the city from the city court and the order from the county had no exceptions. The city ultimately, after me breathing down the, the presiding judge's neck, he finally carved in some exceptions. So exception number one is critical. Because that, that, that is a terrific exception. I was glad to see that in here. Subsection number 2 is a mess. Because subsection number 2, if you read that, that appears to say, I specifically can evict people who have COVID. So I can't understand it. That, that it looks to say, if there's a health issue, you are allowed to evict them, specifically if it's a health issue for COVID. Which to me goes directly against everything that this bill is attempting to do. I, 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 I couldn't comprehend. I, I thought maybe there was a word or two missing out of there, uh, but it, it's clearly wrong. So I mean, if you want to leave it in there, there's almost, I mean, I, I, I can go say, somebody just tested positive for COVID, I'm throwing them out. Uh, I will also raise a couple of other concerns, and I will say, to me again as a lawyer, I'm looking at section 8. And I look at that and I say, this to me, when I look at section 8 and section 10, I look at those two and I say, this bill is illegal on its face. Because section 8 says, if, if the ordinance is deemed unenforceable in part of the county, it is then still enforceable in the other part of the county. I don't know why that would be included in there. And section, when you read then section 9, it is the intent of this ordinance to implement the CDC order. And then section 10 says, if that, however, although the purpose is to implement that order, if that order is ultimately found to be invalid, well, this all still stays in place. Now somebody explained that to me, that if it's intended to implement that order and that order is found to be invalid, we're still going to keep this in place. I, I, I would just pose that I believe those things on their face demonstrate the invalidity of this bill. The uh, so I, I would be happy to talk further about it. I don't want to bend your ear all night. I, I, I would tell you, I think generally, my clients, my landlord clients have been begging me for a year. Please get us relief. Please find us a way to, to get the rent coming in. I hear it every day from my clients, and they are begging for relief. I, I believe as Mr. Fitch said, m- many of these landlords, these are not mega companies with, you know, millions and millions of dollars. Many of these landlords, you know, they are individuals who have their life savings tied up in a little rental house, and they can't get the rent payment made, and they can't get rid of the person who won't pay the rent. And it's a major problem. It's a major problem. And um, I, I do hope, I, I'm happy to answer any other questions you all have for me. Uh, frankly, um, I, I'm happy to give my contact information. Uh, I, I, I would love to chat with you further about either, uh, you know, if, if by some miracle you wouldn't adopt this bill, that'd be wonderful. If you intend to adopt this bill, I would love to offer further two cents on it as to maybe how to improve it, or how to actually implement it in a way that achieves the objectives you truly have for the residents and the landlords. But again, I, I think as an industry, the industry is opposed generally to these kind of uh, eviction moratoria. And we, we all breathe a sigh of relief when the current county moratoria expired, and then I couldn't believe that it was actually being taken up again by the council. So uh, it's kind of, we got a sigh of relief, and then we got a terrible feeling.
So thank you very much, Mr. Forth. Really appreciate that. You gave us a lot to think about. I saw Councilman Fitch's hand first.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, just had a question for uh, Mr. Forth. Uh, as an attorney, uh, I would assume that if the county passed something like this, we could be in some sort of legal jeopardy. Uh, and, and my real question for you is, is how would you envision if this ordinance passes that we would enforce it? So for example, would we go after the, would we go arrest the sheriff for, for doing the eviction? Would we go arrest the judge for issuing the order? Would we go arrest the landlord for applying for this eviction? What would that be?
Uh, well, I, I wasn't going to go there. Uh, but I, I, I will tell you, number one, I don't, among the lawyers that I talk to, I don't sense a strong craving by anybody to pick a fight and sue the county. Uh, certainly there is somebody out there who may be interested in doing that. Uh, you know, I, I know there was a lot of conversation about suing the presiding judges in the city and the county when the, when, when both courts initiated their bans. And there was a lot of talk about it. I don't know that anything really got any traction there. Um, I don't know that there would be a strong desire by anybody to actually do that. I will tell you, Mr. Fitch, a- a- as I read it, I will just tell you, um, I, 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 like I said, I could sit here all night. I could pick this bill apart. I could right now tell you, I've got all kinds of things written on my copy here. There are about a dozen different holes in this thing that I could drive a truck through. That uh, that I'll, I will get my evictions done somehow, some way. I will also add that, because it is, the bill is a mess. The other thing that is dramatically missing from this bill, there's no enforcement of any kind. And I think maybe that's what you're hitting at. There is no enforcement. Uh, so there's no penalty, there's no enforcement. And uh, and so to me, uh, it does, it, it accomplishes literally nothing. And uh, except that it scares a lot of people. It'll scare a lot of landlords. And it will empower a whole lot of tenants who I would say would, would have misinformation. That, that's really what this bill is, is misinformation to tenants. And it's a disincentive for them to either pay their rent or to work out rent payment plans. And so again, it undermines everything. It has no teeth. It's a big mess that, that will actually undermine everything you're trying to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Harder.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you. A couple of things. Um, your landlord association group, how many landlords do you represent?
Uh, me personally or the group, or the association?
The association that you represent.
Uh, well, let, let me step back. So I am a member of the Legislative Committee of the Apartment Association. So I don't know that I can say I represent the association. Uh, I know Katie might have a better idea. She's the president of the association. But uh, I, I assume it's quite a few. I know it's many landlords are, are members of the association, so.
Okay. Do you have a, just a ballpark, and, and how many units are we talking about?
I would, I would say in terms of units, it's got to be thousands and thousands of units. Uh, I mean, many units. You know, you consider uh, you know, probably 100 different landlord, you know, members of the uh, of the association, each with thousands of units. I mean, I can't even guess as to how many thousands of units are represented in the association, but it's substantial.
Okay. And are most of those in St. Louis County or in the city or both?
Uh, I believe, I believe both.
You both. And how many of, of those thousands of units do you think are in default uh, for their rent at least a couple of months or more?
Boy, I, well, you know what I would tell you is, and I can only speak from my experience. Uh, but I can tell you that what I see is I would, so let me, let me draw a line. It's, and it's really fascinating because what I would say is, and what I would describe as A, properties, meaning, you know, I'll call it a high net worth apartment. They have seen very little over this last year in the way of um, uh, possible evictions. I see very, very little of that. Where the real boom has been in delinquency has been in the low income areas. You know, we saw that chart earlier. And uh, and it, it truly is. I would say through the central corridor and then north uh, those areas, I, I don't know in the landlord's, you know, typical portfolio. But what I can see just anecdotally, what comes across my desk are, are really growing and uh, really shockingly high balances in many cases. And um, and I believe real heavy parts of, if you're a landlord who has any kind of uh, uh, consolidation of your portfolio in those areas, it's probably substantial delinquency. I, I, I mean, maybe Katie could speak more to that, but I bet it's a very, very high, high percentage on average for most landlords.
Sure. I've got a number of questions. I want to get through them all quickly. So if you could limit your, your input. That's fine. Um, have, have you uh, in your organizations uh, used this form from the CDC? Are you honoring that? Um, are, are you aware of that form?
You know, I just became aware of that form, I'll say in the last uh, with today's Friday, probably Monday of this week, I just became aware of that form. There's a, there's a new affidavit that the court is having you file, and I'm guessing it mirrors that somehow. But I had not seen that form before the beginning of the week.
Okay, it's two pages, and on the, on the last page, it says, turn it in to your landlord. You know, if you think you're threatened on being evicted. And it's kind of a, you know, get out of jail free card, the way it's written. And I just didn't know if, if your landlords were aware of it, if they were honoring it, or did they? What are they, what are they doing with it?
I'm not regularly seeing it, so I, I haven't thus far.
Okay. Um, normally in your, in your standard form, and I requested your standard lease uh, from your organization, and that lease is roughly about nine pages. The basic lease, and if you add in all the uh, uh, addendums, you're probably closer to 40 or 50. But in that uh, basic lease that you have, the generic one, uh, you, you collect in most cases first and last month's rent in many of your tenants or many of your landlords. Is that true?
Uh, you know, most landlords, in my experience, request either one or the two months of rent. So that, that's fairly standard in the industry.
And that's used mostly as a deposit, security deposit?
Absolutely. Yeah, typically it's to be applied to uh, to any damages at the back end of the lease.
So if we're using round numbers, if it's $1,000 a month rent, he's collecting $2,000 and that's kept in some escrow account, or, or how is that kept?
Well, it'll be one, one or two, depending on how many months. Like I said, it may be one or two months. And typically the landlord is supposed to keep that in a separate escrow account. That it, it, it's not supposed to be commingled with their operating account.
So if someone is behind two months in rent, do you then tap into that escrow to keep your um, your company afloat?
Uh, generally the landlord, the landlord can do that. However, in my experience, landlords almost never do that. Because you want to hold that money back because you don't know what damage you're going to have at the back end of the lease. And so, so most leases have a provision in them. And I believe the lease that you probably got, that's the standard NAA lease, right? I think that's the National Apartment Association lease. Uh, and uh, so most leases like that have a provision in them that says, this uh, we are not obligated to apply an uh, security deposit against a past due balance. But they have that option if they so choose. But most landlords never want to do that.
Okay. And during this time when people are not paying their rent, are you not maintaining? Is your landlords not maintaining their apartments or paying their insurance?
Well, I, I don't, I can't speak to any specific one who is not. What I can tell you is it becomes extremely difficult because, you know, if, if you think about it, if you've got, think, think about your own personal budget. Uh, you know, if you have $1,000 that comes in this month, and you have $2,000 and that, and bills that you need to pay, you know, you're going to pay the bills that you have to pay. So you're going to pay your mortgage, you're going to pay your insurance. Or maybe you won't pay your insurance this month. Maybe you'll let it slide. You're, you know, one thing that none of us can get away from is our taxes, which of course, the county has been getting paid its taxes. Uh, and the place that is going to suffer is going to be your maintenance. That's, that's the area that you can try to fudge on. And, and of course, that then hurts everybody.
So if, if a landlord tried to cut corners because they're not getting the rent they need to keep afloat, uh, they could either protest their taxes, maybe. They could not maintain the building. They could probably fudge on their insurance. They could probably lay off people that work for the complex, anything to save some money to keep afloat, don't you think?
Uh, well, I think they could do any of those things. Uh, I think trying to get your taxes adjusted is going to be, that, that's not a basis to adjust your taxes that you didn't derive enough income from the property typically. That's not usually a basis for uh, getting your, your taxes, your real estate taxes adjusted. And of course, it all depends on your, whether it's a year where you can do that, and if you haven't missed the deadline to do that. So I'll go with that. That's always an option.
Now, in your, in your lease, you say that if you miss your rent payment, you could turn that tenant into a credit bureau and report that uh, slow payment, correct?
Yes, sir.
And do, do you, most of your landlords do that? And when do they do it? At what point?
You know, most of my, I, I would describe it as, most smaller landlord, landlords tend to not do that. Uh, just, they just don't regularly report to uh, to credit bureaus. Among larger landlords, I would say it's probably 50/50 of, of how consistent they are with that.
And then uh, one of the final questions is that if someone uh, is say a multi-unit operator, and they don't get rent for the last year, and they've got, say, 100 units, um, and a, and a big majority of them are not paying, uh, they would probably file for bankruptcy. So if they did that, how would that affect that property and the people that are there, either legally or illegally, if that property files for bankruptcy?
Well, that, that's a, a whole subject we could spend hours on just discussing that process. I can tell you, I, I don't think that's a positive occurrence for anybody who's there, whether it's the, the underlying um, creditor who is secured by that loan, by that mortgage. It doesn't benefit the owner of the property. It doesn't benefit any of the residents of the property. Because in those kind of circumstances, when you wind up, the scenario you're talking about would wind up in a chapter 11 typically. And that is going to wind up almost in like third-party management. It becomes very unwieldy. Um, very difficult for everyone involved. So uh, it, it, it's a, that it becomes a very messy, difficult process that really should be avoided. And, and in this, in a case like this, it's kind of like it's kind of like, it's something we could have avoided if we, if we would have worked together.
So that, that would probably make that property a, a below average property in a very quick time.
Absolutely.
And then finally, uh, have you reviewed, um, bill 111 with your landlord clients? And what is their take on it other than what you've told us already?
Uh, I, I, I would say it's a generally negative reception for my landlord clients. You know, I, I described it before as when the St. Louis counties, when the St. Louis County Court lifted its stay on evictions, I believe that was April 5th when they did, it was a sigh of relief. The number of email I got that day from landlord clients of mine saying, hooray, you know, thank you, Lord. Um, there was a sigh of relief. And as I have, we've started to queue up evictions and trying to get things set up again. I literally just got an eviction. I'll give you an example. I got the, the clerk of court just issued an eviction on a case of mine that I filed in March of 2020. And I got that eviction issued earlier this week. So my client has been sitting on an eviction since March of 2020. And we finally just now can get it queued up. And I told that client, I said, hey, bill 111, I know you've been waiting since March of 2020. I'm really sorry, but you are about to be screwed. And they could not believe it. And that is a general perception, I think, by many, if every one of my landlord clients. It's a, it's an overwhelming negative.
Okay. Thank you for your candor.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else with a question or comment for, uh, Mr. Ford? Well, Mr. Ford, you brought, uh, a lot of, a lot of issues here, uh, that escaped me, particularly the income level here. Uh, and I am going to ask our county council person who is there uh, to kind of weigh in, not today and not during this meeting, but we, we need something as a council to look in to see the validity of what has been said and is that it, it, because we're looking at this as a public health issue. That's what this 111 is couched in a public health issue. And I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what is the public health uh, that's coming out of this. Um, and, and so that, that's where I'm in a quandary. So I'm going to lean to the, um, the council to do that. Any other questions or comments at this point?
Madam Chair.
Fitch, yes.
Thank you. I'd also like the county councilor's office to weigh in on, uh, as you heard my question, uh, what's the enforcement mechanism of this ordinance? And if there's no enforcement mechanism, what good is it? Why are we doing it if there's no enforcement mechanism? If you could, um, Ms. Frank weigh in on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Mr. Ford. We're moving right along here to, uh, Katie Roberts. Katie, the floor is yours.
Hello. Thank you. Thanks to everybody for letting us speak. Well, first we have been, so I'm with the St. Louis Apartment Association. I'm the president on the board and, um, the vice president of veteran properties. Um, so we have 34 properties throughout, um, St. Louis. And we represent 1,500 units, not all in the county, some in the city and the county, however. Um, and all of our properties are, I would say 98% of our properties have some sort, some form of low income involved. So this, you know, has affected our tenants and our residents, um, you know, strongly. And so we have been working with them even before the pandemic, you know, we, we want to help stabilize our residents. We want to help it's the low income, um, the section 42 properties. It's, it is a way for somebody who has low income to, to be able to rent a clean, safe and sanitary home under the market rate and still, as you better yourself, not be penalized. The rent doesn't change. You can become over income after the first year and still stay in your property. So it's a wonderful program. I appreciate everything, um, you know, that Andrea and Yusuf have done and the rental assistance that has been provided. Um, and it is the, with all of the resources out there, it seems like, you know, our residents would be able to, you know, if they would go the proper channels and actually go through the process, you know, some do. And they are getting past due rent paid as well as three months forward. That's wonderful for the residents who actually move forward with those efforts, taking advantage of that. The problem is, is that this kind of, of an ordinance or, you know, these, the, the additional eviction moratorium, the, the message that it sends to residents is that I don't have to pay my rent. Regardless of the information that is sent out to residents, regardless of trying to educate residents on and in understanding the process, it is taken as, and even just today, I received a comment from a resident when I was at, at one of our properties, um, saying we, you know, we're trying to help you. There's money to, out there to help support you. Let's get you back on track. Let's get you in a payment agreement. They said there, there is a rent ban right now. Like I don't have to pay my rent, you know, we're, we're, you know, this is going to be forgiven. Once this is all said and done, this is going to be forgiven. And then I had another resident who, when we tried to apply, did not qualify for the funds because this particular resident was employed and made more money than what was allowed. And this resident was working additional overtime and received a lot of overtime because of a lot of people not working and picking up additional hours. And so this gentleman was very upset because he says, I'm working really hard and yes, I'm making my money, but my neighbor's home all day and he's not paying his rent, so I'm not paying mine. And it's just, this type of moratorium sends a message of, I don't have to pay my rent. And that is what has, has been a really big problem. We actually have a task force in our property. And with our company, we have a task force who, that was put together just to deal with the delinquencies. And when I say deal with, I mean, reach out to the delinquent residents and bring them together and educate them and help them to understand, we're here to help you. We, as a landlord, trust me, we do not want to empty our properties, especially now. But the delinquency rate is very, very high. And for those residents who truly are affected by the pandemic, who truly are trying, they are the ones that are coming forward and, and doing what they're supposed to do. It's the residents who are not. And this is preventing any landlord, it is, it is preventing us from being able to remove them from our property. So even though there are stipulations in the bill that say, okay, they have to meet these factors, it still adds that layer. It still adds that layer where it's going to, you know, put more strain. And with the misunderstanding and, and everything, I, it, you know, it's a rent strike was, was the term that was used today. Uh, it's, it's just, it just makes things a lot harder. And if the court systems are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and, and since all of this, all of the, um, rental assistance is available and out there, if everybody is following these proper channels, we wouldn't have this need for this eviction moratorium anyway. Because the resources are there, the resources are provided. And as a county and as a landlord and, and representative anywhere, there are other, not even just the ERAP and the SAFER programs and, you know, the Urban League and St. Patrick Center and everybody else that is providing assistance. There is assistance to be had. So this moratorium would not be necessary if these residents are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I feel like it is actually backfiring and it is hurting, especially the landlords because it is telling the residents, it is sending the message, you don't have to pay your rent. So even though that's not what you're saying, even though that is not what is spelled out in there, that is the perception. And that is what I hear over and over and over again, and also from other landlords in the industry.
So you're saying essentially that is, that is what the reality is with that, uh, that, that's happening. But what I, I want to make clear is before, and I guess a lot of this took place before we had the ERAP monies. Okay. And so now that we have the ERAP monies, I, I know that the landlords were probably thinking that they weren't ever going to, you know, be able to recoup from this. And so now that we have the ERAP monies, does that make you feel, um, a little bit better in the fact that you think you're going to get paid?
So yes, so like I was saying before, the, all of the, the ERAP in this, in the SAFER programs, they're wonderful. Like there is, there is income to be had and we are trying to educate our residents. Like I said, we put a task force together just to get the word out and any notice that is sent out, there is a brochure that explains this. In St. Louis Apartment Association, we actually participated in the webinar um, with the, um, you know, with Andrea and Yusuf.
You, as a landlord, you can apply as well.
Oh, yes.
It's just not left, it's just not left to the resident to do this. You have the wherewithal to apply on behalf of the ones who are not paying, right?
Yes, that is true, but the, there is, there is a part that the resident has to do. So we have actually done that where we will go in and we will start an app, an application for specific residents. The resident has to sign forms and provide documents and information and have to upload it to the system. And it takes like 45 minutes, even if you're just sitting in the office. That's why we have a task force, um, to, to have them come in. And if the resident doesn't have computers or really understand how to do it, that is why that person is there is to lead them through. But yes, the landlord can apply, but the resident has to be an active participant in the application process.
Now, and, and have you had a resistance from your, uh, tenants that they don't want to do that?
Um, yes. And I shouldn't say yes. I say most are very happy to come in. I should, I don't even want to say most. Some are very happy to come in and have taken a part in it. I've had, we had six come in just today. But there are, we have some residents who owe $15,000 in rent and are still there and just absolutely not communicating, will not come into the office, will not respond to anything. It's that person, it's that resident where they're not, they are the ones who make the comment that there is a rent strike and it's, it's that misunderstanding. So I think any kind of moratorium or ban, that kind of information, that kind, it sets that tone for a resident to not do it, to not care.
Councilwoman Webb has a question here.
Yes, ma'am.
You're on mute.
Madam Chair, thank you. Um, you asked some of the questions I was going to inquire about is if the landlords or the property owners have already started the process to be, or apply for the program. You answered that. As for your task force, because of the limitations or hurdles or challenges, whatever they may be, has your task force went door to door?
Yes, we have knocked on doors. Now, if, if somebody will respond, um, to a notice or a phone call, then that's great because then they know what information to bring in. If the resident has not responded, it's knocking on doors. We are going and trying to get all of our residents caught up because again, no landlord wants to be vacant. That is, that is terrible. But if you have an occupied unit that isn't paying rent, you're still paying the utilities on that unit and the wear and tear on that unit. So it's just, and it, it, if somebody's home and the, the utilities have gone up, you know, it's, there's, it's just been a big burden on the landlords. So putting something like this in place, and, and another point that I wanted to make was like, if this is like an indefinite thing, saying the eviction moratorium, now the eviction, eviction moratorium, moratorium that have been in place. So there's like no end date in sight. And once there is an end date, then it's extended each time. I feel that if there's even a, a true date of, okay, in two weeks, this is going to be lifted. At that point, there may be a surge of people who will then be like, okay, no, no, now, now, you know, now I'm going to come in and I'm going to apply for this assistance. Now I'm going to pay. Now I want to communicate. But at this point, and, and, and adding an additional layer or an addition, an additional moratorium, it just keeps that resident at bay thinking, I got time, I got time. So if there's actually an end date or some kind of a consequence for not doing it, then I think that's going to bring more people. Whereas if there's continued excuses, it's just, it's, it's harmful.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Yeah, um, I don't have a question, but I just want to know, we're going on 90 minutes and we haven't heard a single perspective yet from any of the tenants. Um, I will be here all night if I have to, but I know some of you have signaled that it is a Friday and you want to get on, but I would like to hear some other perspectives. Thank you.
Certainly. And we hope that, I guess the next person might be that person. I'm not sure, but we will, we will do that. Um, any further questions or comments from Katie? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Moving on to Elad Gross. Did I say that right?
You're close. It's, it's close, Chairwoman. It's Alad Gross.
Alad. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'm in the Bible somewhere. I got a line. It was nice.
All right.
Yeah. Uh, no, thank you all for having me. Um, I really appreciate it. So my name's Alad Gross. I am with the St. Louis Mediation Project, uh, which is often in the middle of this whole situation. So, uh, our clients are not just tenants, they're landlords too. And we have been working with the St. Louis County Courts and the St. Louis City Courts until recently, uh, for over a decade now. Uh, Professor Karen Tokars, who I'm sure some of you know over at Wash U, has been leading this effort for a very long time, uh, is a very accomplished mediator. And, uh, I've had, um, the opportunity to work with her, um, really since this whole crisis started. Also happen to be a constitutional attorney. Didn't know I was going to put that hat on today, but I've got some comments here. Um, and hopefully, uh, Councilman Fitch, I can answer some of the questions that you had specifically with respect to, uh, this bill. Um, so I do agree first, uh, Councilman, um, I think it would be an excellent idea to have the sheriff bringing the flyer with them as well. Um, I was actually the person who designed the flyer that's currently going out with the summons. Um, that flyer has been redesigned at least 20 or 30 times and I've got all the drafts to prove it. Um, and it has changed recently because the programs that are available have changed too. So there is ERAP now in St. Louis County. In addition to that, and some folks have mentioned it already, SAFER exists on the statewide level. I've actually been working very closely with MHDC to put out tutorial videos to get those videos to people, to different Facebook groups, to different, uh, uh, community organizations that folks can see pretty quickly, hey, here's how I apply. Uh, it is not the most intuitive thing to do, especially if your internet access is your phone. And unfortunately, some of the application for folks, uh, when we do get to the phone, it ends up they fill out some information and then, um, I've actually helped quite a few folks upload documents, get those things together, and that includes landlords as well. Um, there are a number of landlords that I've worked with. Uh, oftentimes they don't have as many properties, maybe that's why they're coming to me. Um, and I've uploaded documents for them or helped them connect with their tenant. Much of the work that we've done over this whole period, but also for years past is we will be in the courtroom. Obviously now we can't really do that with COVID, so we've adapted to doing it, um, over WebEx and, uh, really wherever else. We've also extended that community mediation program into the community to try to head off these issues before they get to court. Um, there, there are a couple of gaps right now with the information that has gone out. Um, this flyer did not exist for this entire time. So it is, um, unfortunately, there are a number of folks who are already in the system who did not receive any of this information from the court. Um, hopefully they have obtained that information from somewhere. But even as this meeting has been going, uh, I've received many texts from folks that I'm working with now or would like to work with me on completing their application. And the first time that they did hear about the assistance programs or the CDC order, uh, or any of this other stuff, um, was in the last few days when they got that sticker on their door. Um, so I, I do think it would be very beneficial to get that information to them while that's happening. And if the sheriff would do it, goodness gracious, that would be, uh, a great burden off of the outreach of other organizations. I'm sure everybody would be very happy for that. Um, I, I think it's very important that, you know, I, I mean, unfortunately, a lot of folks are not very familiar with that CDC declaration that has been out there for quite some time in one form or another. Um, I think that's kind of indicative of how this information isn't really getting out to the folks it needs to, whether that's a landlord, a landlord attorney, a tenant, tenants' organizations. Um, and I think that that's, that's just showing kind, we're, we're at a, at a difficult time with all of this because the evictions just started and the funding just restarted too. And having worked on this program when funding was initially out there and was kind of a mess and then turned off and then was gone for a while and now has come back, I cannot tell you how many landlords and tenants I was working with who didn't make it under the deadline, who didn't know because the communication was not as good as it is now. They couldn't track their applications and they were never getting, you know, no one would call them back. Um, and, and, you know, I know that there are a lot of folks who are frustrated and we try. and and you know, I know that there are a lot of folks who are frustrated and we try to work with them and and hopefully a lot of folks will will be able to be patient for a little bit longer. But um, you know, this program has been working and it is good that it's turned on. The problem is that the evictions have turned on at the same time and the timeliness of that uh doesn't match very well. Um, I I do agree, um, uh, is it, I'm sorry, Mr. Fourth um, on section seven, paragraph two, um, yeah, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure what that meant either with the COVID issue. Uh, maybe it was meant to be that if someone has COVID at the time and they also qualify under some other eviction protocol, then we should check them out before we remove them. That would make the most sense there. I wasn't sure. Maybe there was a, it looked like it was kind of smushed together. So maybe there was an extra enter button that wasn't pressed there. Um, the income level, I know this has been talked about a couple times. Um, the income level matches the CDC declaration and the reason is, it's not necessarily to just stop this at a certain income level. I mean, it was done that way because I, you know, you're drawing a line at some point or another. Um, but it was because this is a public health issue and it's been being done under public health authority. So um, it does match the CDC. It does match with some of the public health cases that have been out there. Um, and I will tell you, the phone calls that I've gotten, some of them have been very surprising. Um, I got one recently from somebody who did not have a job uh for many months, uh, but he's back at work. He's making quite a bit of money and he uh thought he was going to be able to pay everything off. He's been making efforts to pay and he's been told uh that he's going to be evicted. He got the little sticker because he didn't really know that the court case was going on for one reason or another. Um, and uh, he told his landlord, look, I'm going to have all of the money for you in three weeks. I'm going to pay this much. I've been paying. And landlord said, well, if you don't have it all by Friday, you're gone because that's your eviction date. Um, and so I know, you know, some of the situations, they're very different and certainly the folks who are presented here, um, it sounds like their heart is in a different place. Um, but unfortunately, that's not uniform and we are having issues where folks who are gainfully employed now did work for a bit there. Um, a lot of healthcare workers, a lot of home healthcare workers that I've talked to, the majority of the folks who call me are women with children who worked in home healthcare or some related field and uh have really not been able to make money or their hours have been cut so drastically because of the pandemic. Um, and and they're really struggling. So fortunately, when I do get to talk to the landlord and I say, hey, would you like free money? Uh, the answer is usually yes, but the problem is they don't know ahead of time. And that's what's been the real struggle is just the information hasn't been out there. Um, I do disagree a little bit with some of the um, statements that were made before uh analyzing the proposed uh bill. Uh, one, uh, you know, I know that the the talk about a disincentive, um, but the definitions there for a covered person does require effort, uh, does require that person to be making effort to pay what they can, also to apply for funding sources. Um, and that's in in both of the uh, CDC and in in the proposed one here. Um, in section three in your proposed bill also does permit the landlord to challenge that. So they they do have an avenue to go to court and say, look, this person is not doing the right thing. They're not paying anything. They're not listening to me and applying for anything. Um, and so that that has been available under the CDC order as well, but would be available here. Uh, in terms of enforcement, Councilman Fitch, um, only the sheriff is actually authorized to conduct the eviction. Unfortunately, we are seeing a rise in illegal lockouts, um, which can be very dangerous for everybody who's involved. Um, but the only one uh, under the law who can actually evict somebody from their home is the sheriff's office. Um, and so under this bill, uh, that's the person who's really being dictated to here in terms of don't do an eviction. Um, if the uh sheriff does attempt to do so, then the enforcement mechanism would be to go to court and to ask for some kind of an emergency injunction or something from the court saying to that uh sheriff, don't do this immediately so that we can have a hearing and see whether this was done the right way. So that's normally how that's enforced, but perhaps um your county councilor will feel differently about that. Um, and then finally, section ten, uh, which was regarding whether, you know, if the CDC order is invalidated, then this one is still applying. Um, local, local authority on public health issues is very different under the law from what the federal uh system can do. Part of that is because local authorities know more about local area, local practice, what's going on with the CDC um, uh, issues that they're they're trying to address, but in particular what the pandemic numbers are in your locality. So I I do think that that um, from a legal standpoint, that section also makes sense because it is possible that um, and the Supreme Court has done this before in different cases where they find that something that applies nationwide doesn't make sense because it doesn't apply as well when you look at the local granular data. Um, if you do look at the public health data and I will set, because I know we're getting late, so I'll send you all emails with this information too, um, including a letter from Professor Tokars about her opinions on this. She really wished to be here, but uh, you know, maybe it's a Friday night, so she sends me instead. But uh, the, the public health data and the, the, the the uh reports that have been coming out have shown a significant uh correlation between the end of moratoria and the increase in public incidence of COVID nineteen. And that just stresses again why um this is really, should be seen from the lens of a public health issue versus uh more of an economic one, but we are seeing in effect that um unfortunately, this is hitting every community. Um, it's hitting uh marginalized communities much harder and it will be absolutely, unfortunately, um, absolutely devastating if folks, especially now, don't just have that buffer time to go and apply for funding because there's no way with the date that that thing opened and how evictions could, I mean, someone I'm calling is facing an eviction tomorrow morning. There's absolutely no way if they did absolutely everything right and had internet access and had a computer at home that they would have been able to get funding by that point. So I'm happy to take any questions. And like I said, I'll, I'll send you an email so you'll have my contact info too.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gross. I don't have any questions for you because I have to leave. Uh, the council uh approved some resolutions for the Creve Court Olivet Chamber of Commerce banquet, and that's in, well, it started at five thirty. So I do have a question for Diane on the public comments. Uh, Diane, are those public comments that you have for this meeting the same ones that were received by email?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I will have to leave. So thank you.
And thank you. Any, any comments or questions, Councilman Harder?
Couple of questions for Mr. Gross. Um, Mr. Gross, uh, are you paid by the landlords and the tenants? How are you compensated?
Uh, so I'm not compensated, haven't been for the last month and a half. We were uh previously compensated under the uh, uh, a grant from the CARES Act, uh, but for the last month and a half, um, uh, I've not been.
Okay, so prior to that, you were getting, your, your services were being paid for by the CARES Act?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. If someone sent you a letter and said the CARES Act's not paying you anymore, what would you, how would you feel about that?
Well, that's the situation now when I'm still doing the work. So I wouldn't feel super happy about it and maybe a little hungry, but um I think this is an extremely important issue and we'd still be helping folks.
And so, so how long would you keep doing the work if no one was paying you?
Um, at this point, um, probably indefinitely, and that's the intent of the uh, the program as well. I mean, hopefully we solve all these problems and then there's not an issue. So that would be uh, that would be great. But the, the stakes are very high for the region and honestly for the future of the region because I, I cannot tell you how absolutely awful um some of these calls are and uh how much we are trying to help both landlords and tenants right now.
You made some reference to, you made some reference to some state uh data about COVID and and moratoriums and things like that. Where are you pulling that data from?
Yeah, that's from a recent article that was, well, actually it's a peer reviewed um research in nature and I will be sending that in the email as well. I'll send a link to all of that information too.
Okay, so you, you see kind of how where the landlords are, um, they're not getting paid for the services they're providing. They can't do anything about it. Um, but they still have to provide the service, just like you would for your clients, correct? But they can only go so far, right? You can only go so far before you're either too hungry or your bills can't be paid, correct? So that's kind of where these landlords are, wouldn't you think?
Absolutely understand, yeah. And I, like I said, I, we are landlords or our clients too, and so totally understand that. And that's why, like I said, this program that provides funding is so essential and it's essential to give folks time to apply for that before we just say, all right, kick everybody out because that's going to cause just such significant damage in the long run to everybody who's involved. Um, and uh, I, I think that that would be a worse result for everyone.
Would you say this form from the CDC would buy you that time that you need to get the, the funding filled out?
Uh, the CDC form does have that same date, but for the reasons that I mentioned, um, I, I do think that this bill that's being proposed does have some benefits on its own. Now honestly, um, I do think that something should more automatically apply because this bill uh does require somebody to still put forth that, uh, some kind of a declaration. The big benefit that this bill does, the CDC form does not, is that the CDC form, you've got to have some kind of way to get that form printed out, uh, check it off and then get a copy to your landlord and keep a copy in case if sheriff comes, which has been happening quite a bit despite folks sending it to their landlord. The bill, at least the way that it is written, uh, just says a declaration that says these things in it. So that could potentially allow somebody, if they don't have access to a printer or to the internet, they could actually just write it out um with help online from one of the nonprofit organizations or somebody else. So it does provide more flexibility there. And like I said, uh, local ordinance versus a federal one, there are different um, you know, different challenges that can be made one way or another and different ways of looking at it from the court's perspective.
Okay, thank you. I got one quick question from Mr. Fourth. Um, Mr. Fourth, when you looked at this bill, uh, and the way I looked at this, I saw this, it it almost seemed to be a cut and paste bill. Did you seem to get that, that indication on how it was written?
Uh, you know, I, I, I would say it, it cut and paste, but sloppily cut and pasted is how I would describe it.
So you think this was lifted from other documents that are out there in the internet or wherever?
Uh, probably. I'm sure there are some other moratoria that this was copied off of or maybe cobbled together from a couple of them. But again, it, it's sloppily done and there are so many parts of it that are, are just, it's filled with holes and and arguments that it's just waiting to be made. Like I said, I, I've got probably a dozen different ways to combat this bill, so.
And how does this compare to the city of St. Louis's moratorium? Their bill?
The, so the city doesn't have a moratorium on its own yet. What the city had, it, it was operating similar to the county, which is that the court had issued its own moratorium. And, and so, you know, so the county, what the county had was, it was a moratorium that the court had issued that had no end date, that was a moratorium on the sheriff's executions uh of any writs being done. So what that effectively did was shut down the sheriff's service of any and all eviction writs. The city, and and it had again, no exceptions, no end date. And then we got the surprise of it being uh canceled by the court. This, what the city has is a different order, which is a standing order that is uh essentially, it, it, it is very clear. It's not just a general anti-writ order. It specifically says no executions for possessions and for possession of rental property, but then it carves out various exceptions to it for commercial property, for um, it, it, it has some similar uh, exceptions that you've got in, in Bill one eleven, which is the, an exception for crime and drugs, an exception for uh lease violation actions. So for example, those would be unlawful detainer actions typically. So it has a number of exceptions, but that's, that's an order that the court has made that what the court has done is it has rolled that order basically on a monthly basis. So um, that order I believe was just renewed again and expires, I believe, May third. Uh, don't quote me on that, but um, but the, so the city has just kept that rolling. And and I will ask, I will tell you, as you're contemplating this, um, as you're looking at your bill, uh, it's a question that I would pose to you, and that is, when i- if this bill passes as is, what is the objective criteria that you will look at as a council when June rolls around as to whether or not you're going to renew this? It's a question I kind of rhetorically posed to you uh, to ask, what, what is the objective criteria you all are going to consider uh as to whether or not to let it expire?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Okay. One, one second. Councilman Harder, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, uh, Councilwoman Webb's can.
Uh, David, just like Katie, she said that they have a task force. They are working with their tenants to actually apply for the um we rental assistance program. Are you doing the same with your clients and how many are percentages of your clients you've actually worked through to get the actual funding, rentals into rental assistance?
I, I don't know. I, I think having a task force is pretty cutting edge. Um, you know, so many landlords are struggling just to get rent paid on a regular basis and do their normal work. Um, what I know a lot of my clients have done, what I have personally seen over the last, I'll say, uh, probably the last three months is I have canceled almost, I would guess ninety percent of the cases that I had pending in specifically in St. Louis County, uh, because clients managed to get their uh cases that were pending through into the ERAP program. So I have, I, I literally would say it's probably been ninety percent. That's bad for the lawyers, right? You know,
Ninety percent of your clients have actually applied for rental assistance?
Ninety, I would say ninety percent of the cases that I had pending, my clients have been able to get through the ERAP program after we've had the case pending.
Okay, so that's a pretty good percentage. So, so yes, ma'am. Uh, uh, so you're not doing it on behalf of your clients. Your council is taking initiative on their own, correct? All right. Thank you, Mr. David. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, I want to go back to Mr. Gross, please. Um, so Alad, I, um, you were someone who has been um working on implementing the distribution of relief funds for some time um through the, including through the CARES Act, correct?
That's right.
And now you are working on the distribution, on implementing the distribution of funds through ERAP, right? When did the CARES Act fund um for housing relief run out?
Oh, goodness. Um, I know that the application starting around October, that was pretty much done. It was very hard to tell because you'd be on a waitlist and wouldn't know, but it seemed around that time was when stuff stopped.
So we didn't have more relief fund for this until April fifth, correct?
Yeah, there, the, so the Safer program did open up to, we, we weren't expecting it until, but it was that Thursday right before. So it was that first week of April.
So I, that is, that is important because there was a months-long gap of relief out there or of, of relief that wasn't available. And so, you know, I heard some of your, some of the commenters before you say, you know, the landlords or the, and the tenants have known about this for a long time. They know they've, they're at imminent risk of eviction. They literally didn't have any resources available to them. There wasn't anything else we could do. And I, I don't think any of us wants to be in this position here today. But part of the problem and part of why we are is because the courts decided to reopen and go into phase two on the exact same day that our county's relief program was ready to go. So there wasn't time for people to access the relief funds prior. And there's a gap now in what the city is doing versus what the county is doing. Um, you know, so I just, I think we have a moral imperative to work together to get the resources out. And there's going to be some folks that fall through the crack, which is exactly why we need this backstop that this legislation provides.
Mr., Mr. Gross, you, uh, how many evictions are from your agency happen within the, in the, in the gap? Do you have an idea?
Uh, I know that we've uh mediated uh probably over two hundred cases now. Um, and the number, I mean, what we try to do is when we mediate, we end in some kind of an agreement. Some of those don't get to agreement, but about seventy-five percent historically of our cases have uh reached some kind of an agreement to extend that time. Um, but uh, I, I don't know from, from mediations and we do pretty well. So I'm not sure how many have actually gone, but not very many.
Not very many have been evicted in the gap. And I'm asking about the gap that when started, that's, that's, and, and when we have the new program. Understand that. And a lot of that had to do with the inefficiencies of us making sure that we got that program going as well, which I'm seeing right now. This looks like it's a little bit better, in a better shape than, than what we did previously. So that, that's, now let me ask you this other question about, because you said something about the public health and, and the housing, the evictions and, and the COVID increases.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm trying to figure out, because we have had the moratorium for how long?
Uh, this moratorium has been in place um since last year. Uh, it was last summer.
A moratorium in, in place. And so now we had one section, I guess you would say, from October, November, whenever to March. I guess you would say, from October, November, whenever to March. And, and so you're saying the COVID numbers, that's what I'm asking about, the COVID numbers increased in that, because the moratorium was there. So if that was an increase, can you truculously say that that was based because you had, um, the moratorium went away?
Right. So, so the moratorium has been there in one form or another this whole time, up until very recently. So up until this, this April. So from St. Louis's perspective, um, it would be very hard to tell just looking at St. Louis, hey, COVID has increased because we haven't changed our moratorium one way or another. The way that the studies are done is it compares municipalities of similar size. So we're, in the study, we were in tier three, uh, of cities and they compared us to different ones. And then they look at us, which we had a moratorium versus other places that didn't. And they've seen an increase in those places that didn't versus us who did, so.
So that did not necessarily happen to be St. Louis County?
Correct. Yeah, it could, it could not have been.
You're comparing us with somebody else.
Yes, that's it. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we, we just need to be careful that we are comparing apples to apples here. And, 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 and that kind of, uh, kind of hit me there. And a lot of this, and I will tell you that on both sides, there's a lot of anecdotal, um, you know, issues that we're talking about here, you know, this person and that person. And when I talk to the court and they tell me a number of six, they have only six executed evictions in the last year. Now that, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if your numbers correlate with that because if I'm hearing these anecdotes, it's about six of y'all talking about. So, so that's what I'm, I'm kind of getting to, um, you know, that we, we need to make sure we're consistent with our information here. Uh, and it, and, and we don't need to be inflammatory, but the last thing we want to do is have people sitting out on the curb with their belongings. And we also don't want landlords with empty buildings and they're collapsing because they cannot do the necessary maintenance to keep the buildings up. We don't want those in our communities. And also, if you look at the numbers, you will notice that they are basically in the first and the fourth, where we have a lot of these, uh, th- this problem going on. So I just want to make sure we, we're consistent in our message as we, as we move through. I think I saw your hand, Ms. Roberts.
Yes, thank you. I, and actually, it, it was just a comment from a few minutes ago. But, um, we were able to apply for funding through the E-RAP program through March the 31st. And so, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, okay. So, and, and, and a lot of this was happening before, as I mentioned earlier, before E-RAP and before we were able to even get, um, um, a third party administrator or anybody else in place. And now that we have that, you know, hopefully this will eliminate. Mr. Gross?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, just a couple of things. So, so one of the big, there are two different E-RAP programs. Uh, there's the E-RAP through the state, and that was for landlords for up to six months. And there were some restrictions on there. Then the county one started recently. That was the one that started in April. So that's the county one that can go up to 15 months in some circumstances. Um, and so unfortunately, the landlord one was very restrictive. Um, and I know a lot of folks, uh, refused to do it because of the restrictions that were imposed, uh, including 120 days of agreeing not to evict somebody. So it, that program is dead now. MHDC got rid of it because it was not popular and was not a very effective one. Um, and then for, so the, for the moratorium, we've, there have been no evictions occurring this whole time. The, the six folks are what's happening right now out of the 600 who've been targeted. Yeah, so that's just the immediate ones.
That's what we need to know. We need to make sure we, we understand that. Okay, so we got that. Um, any questions, any other questions for anyone else who called? Uh, Councilwoman Clancy, uh, Councilwoman, um, Harder?
Clarify, uh, for those that are landlords or working with landlords, based on your, this bill and your lease agreement, you can still evict people for drug use, uh, violent criminals, and, you know, other means other than not paying rent, correct?
Correct.
So, so just, we have to break that out as well when we look at evictions, is that they may have the money, but they're a troublemaker in your property. Uh, they can still be evicted. They're not going to be covered by this. Um, and you can still move forward with those type of evictions, correct?
Correct. And that was, that was a major, major problem with the prior standing order from the presiding judge from St. Louis County, is that it did not have that exception.
And what happens, what happens when a tenant is both a troublemaker and a, uh, somebody that's not paying their rent? How are they, are they covered or not?
Uh, uh, typically they are. Uh, I will tell you, what's happened in the city specifically is, is that the judges in the city are now requiring even cases, in cases of default judgments involving, these, these are what are called 441 actions, which are for expedited evictions. And in the city, the judges are actually still holding a default hearing in which I have to put onto my witness to actually testify as to what the actual allegations of, of violence or drugs are being alleged. And so the judges are actually holding our feet to the fire so that, there was a concern, I know among the judges in the city, that, um, that landlords might, uh, fudge on it, you know, and say somebody's dangerous and use that as, as a, a, you know, a fake, essentially as a red herring for other, you know, circumstances that really are about rent. So I know that in the city, they're holding our feet to the fire a little more on it. I disagree with that under the statute, but that's what they're doing.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Clancy, you had someone that you wanted to, uh, speak in. Where is Chris? Oh, Chris, can you move them up to, I guess, a panelist in order for them to speak?
Well, uh, Madam Chair, I don't, I was told this morning when I tried to get them to be panelists that it was too late and I had missed the deadline, even though no deadline had been communicated. I know we talked about this on the phone, so therefore I went forward with Plan B and asked those folks to submit letters. Um, I don't know if any of them are on the phone. Um, I will say though, at this time, if I may, that I did receive a letter. And I think the full council received a letter from St. Francis Community Services, which is the part, part of the Catholic Legal Assistance Ministry in support of Bill, uh, 111. We also received a letter from Action St. Louis. Um, Mr. Canard Williams submitted that on behalf of A, of Action St. Louis in support of Bill 111. And we did receive a letter of support from, on Bill 111 from Susan Alverson of Legal Services of Eastern Missouri. I have made sure that the entire council has gotten copies of those letters. And I have also asked, um, our clerk to make sure that those letters are entered into the record for today's meeting.
Okay, thank you. So would you check to see, uh, if there's anyone on? Just want to make sure that they have an opportunity if someone is on, uh, wishes to speak at this point before we go to public comment.
Ma'am, who do you want me to look for? Because I can pull up everyone that's in.
Yeah, let me take a look at the participants list. I know at one point I did see Canard, um.
He's in there. I, I can move him up if you'd like.
Okay, well, let's just hear from Canard then. Can you move him up, Chris, please?
Hello.
He is in and unmuted.
How are you, Mr. Williams?
I'm doing all right. Thank you for having me here today.
Absolutely. You may proceed.
Uh, give me one second. I have to pull up, uh, whatever.
Yes, and also, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, um, I also know Kalila Jackson is here as well from, um, I believe she is from E-Hoc, so she would also like to speak.
I'll move her up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, this is, this is David Fourth. I'm sorry, I'd love to continue.
Hold on, Madam Chair, I'd like to continue if I could.
And thank you for letting me appear, but I have to leave. I would love to sit and listen, but thank you very much for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Canard, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay.
You can proceed.
Thank you. My name is Canard Williams. I'm lead organizer with Action St. Louis and a member of SCL Housing Defense Collective. Action St. Louis is a grassroots racial justice organization that seeks to build political power for black communities in St. Louis region. Action St. Louis builds campaigns that leverage organizing, communications, advocacy, and direct action to mitigate harm against our community while fighting for long-term transformation. In conjunction with SCL Housing Defense Collective, we've worked extensively with supporting and organizing tenants facing issues ranging from deteriorating and oftentimes hazardous living conditions and those at risk of eviction, in some cases illegally evicted by their landlords. The economic crisis triggered by the pandemic has impacted many in the region, but the eviction crisis underlying it would disproportionately impact black families across the region who have already felt the compounding challenges of keeping up on mounting rent and utility bills after enduring pay cuts, lost wages, and job losses that so many employers have enacted at the start of the crisis. Over the last week, Action St. Louis has canvassed and knocked over 300 doors in North County of tenants who were imminent risk of eviction, some as soon as next week. And many apartment complexes' evictions were filed in bulk, the majority of which were filed by an eviction attorney by the name of Matthew Chase. In many of these situations, families attest to issues they've been having about deteriorating conditions, landlords and property managers becoming increasingly slow or unresponsive to repairs through the pandemic, but not having the financial stability to move because of economic hardship and difficulty accessing rental assistance programs. Combined with this, the threat of eviction. At some points, we found whole blocks of units that had, uh, eviction notices posted throughout. At one point, a 10 apartment, a 10-building apartment complex had over 20 eviction notices posted for execution, which equated to two whole buildings of the complex as a whole. Of the tenants we reached out, many, uh, recounted issues that they had with being able to access rental assistance programs in the county and made available only two weeks ago. Not only have tenants experienced accessibility issues, long waits with finding out about approval for rental assistance through the county or SAFER funds, but also issues of landlords and property management companies refusing to participate in rental assistance programs so the tenants can get back on track. The decision by St. Louis County Courts to interface to and proceed with evictions has not only left families with no time for assistance funds to be applied for, no time for assistance requests to be processed or allocated, but it's opened a floodgate that will unnecessarily and inevitably expose many to the threat of imminent homelessness and hundreds of others all across the region as well. And so Action St. Louis and SCL Housing Defense Collective strongly urge the committee to take action on extending the eviction moratorium in St. Louis County. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Any questions for Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, I have one question, uh, for, for the people that you're, you're speaking of. Have, are they aware of the E-RAP program? Have they applied to the E-RAP program and what has been the response?
Hello, uh, thank you for that question. Uh, with people who have applied for some of these assistance programs, uh, keep in mind, the county's, uh, programs just became available two weeks ago. So many people had been waiting for, you know, untold periods of time, long waits, not hearing anything back, and just gave up. As far as the other assistance programs and being able to access those people, there are stories of people in apartment complexes, particularly places that have had like large numbers of filings like this. They have had their landlords refuse to even go through the process of doing the rental assistance and receiving the rental assistance, preferring to just have the tenant go through the eviction process instead.
So the, the E-RAP program applies to the landlords as well as the tenants?
No, I, I was, I was saying that the, the people that we've been talking to, like when going through the rental assistance programs to apply for it, like the tenant, like there are situations where tenants have done their side of things, but landlords have refused to go through or cooperate with doing the process.
Well, what, and what in this bill would, would, would require that to happen?
Uh, I don't know if anything in this bill would necessarily, uh, affect that happening. However, the timeframe for, like when we talk about a moratorium and like how that helps people, like there are situations where people are still waiting weeks. Like these programs take weeks for these funds to get processed. Even if, you know, you have a landlord that says, okay, I'll, you know, I'll go through this process. It takes weeks for that to happen. And there are people who have evictions delayed as soon as Tuesday, who even if they had applied at 2:00 today, there's no way that those funds would be dispersed, that their landlord would get that money and therefore the eviction would still be carried out.
So have they, have they prepared the eviction protection declarations? Have they utilized that?
We have given eviction protection declarations to people, um, you know. But at the same time, you know, it's very hard for people to trust that this piece of paper is going to protect them from getting evicted out of their dwelling.
So, so you're saying they don't trust the, the, the paper?
No, I'm not saying that people don't trust that. People are filling out the declarations and have been taking the declarations. However, people's faith in this piece of paper, when we, you know, we're sitting here hearing, uh, for lack of a better term, landlords, lawyers, talk about how there are people who aren't applying for these programs and talking about all of this when they're giving other sides of the stories in the streets. They're telling people that they're privately owned, so they don't have to comply with the federal moratorium, that it doesn't apply to them. There's clear misinformation being told by landlords to tenants that they don't have to do anything with that.
Thank you. Any questions, any questions for Mr. Williams?
Is there an attorney that's on the line that can, oh, they're both gone. Okay, nevermind.
Well, is Mr. Well, I don't know if Mr. Gross, are you an attorney?
I, I, yes, I am.
I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross, I was thinking about Mr. David or Ms. Katie.
What, I'm sorry, what's the specific issue?
So as he spoke about the miscommunications coming directly from the landlords that informing tenants that they're privately owned, they don't have to adhere to these standards in his declaration, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross, I'm not disrespecting you as an attorney. I was really wanting to hear from Mr. David Fourth and Ms. Katie Roberts. They're both gone now. So, uh, because they were advocating on behalf of landlords. And you were more advocating for tenants and landlords, so you can see both sides of the coin. But them being specifically advocates for the landlords, I wanted to know, had they had, had any feedback or heard of anything or can address that comment? But if you have some knowledge, sir, please share.
I do. I, I have heard some folks, uh, misinterpret or not even understand that the moratorium is a thing. Uh, in fact, I just talked to a landlord yesterday who believed that because the county moratorium was done, that means there is nothing anymore, there is no CDC anything. Um, that is inaccurate and the CDC moratorium, the declaration, as this bill would as well, uh, would apply whether, I mean, most landlords are privately owned, so I'm not really, I'm not really sure. But unfortunately, a lot of folks don't know when you hear that from a landlord who's got most of the control in the situation, um, that causes a lot of problems for you as a tenant.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I appreciate you addressing it.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Jackson?
Good afternoon.
This will be our last person this, this morning, this evening. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, counsel. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
And I apologize, I don't have prepared remarks because I wasn't expecting to talk this evening. So I'll just, um, I'll keep my remarks brief and I will, um, I will just kind of speak from my experience. So, um, my name is Kalila Jackson. I am the senior staff attorney at the Metropolitan St. Louis Equal Housing Opportunity Council. We are a nonprofit fair housing agency. And primarily, um, we don't typically, uh, focus our work around evictions. But in March of last year, uh, we could see the writing on the wall. We could see that with the, um, the closings and the job loss, that there was going to be a corresponding increase, um, in evictions. And so our agency started an eviction defense program, um, which was funded, um, in part by, uh, St. Louis County and in part by St. Louis City. We were able to bring on legal fellows in order to defend tenants in eviction actions in both the city and the county. Um, I just took a look at our numbers briefly while I was waiting, uh, for Canard to finish his remarks. And just between, um, August and, uh, December of last year, E-Hoc, uh, represented and assisted 417 families, 207 of which are in, uh, the county uh, with, um, information, legal defense, and connection to resources. So I really want to push back. I, I frankly wish, um, uh, Mr. Fourth and Katie, um, had, were on the call. So I really want to push back on this notion, um, that there are tenants who are in properties who just don't want to pay rent. We talk to these people every day. We see, um, these situations. People don't pay their rent. Um, sometimes it's because, uh, life has happened. They've had job losses, they've had deaths, um, they've had disability, they've had illness. But people simply do not pay their rent, uh, because they don't want to, because they're looking for a free ride. And it, it is a, um, a constant refrain that we hear. And it, it is a, um, a constant refrain that we hear amongst the landlord tenant bar, um, and it's one of the most destructive things. Um, and so I would, um, I, I would, I want to go on record with that challenge. These are real people, these are teachers. These are, um, these are workers, um, that, these are, these are drivers, these are mothers. Um, these are hardworking people, um, who life has happened and they find themselves in a situation and many of them are doing everything in their power to try to make ends meet. Um, this ordinance should not be shocking. It models in almost every way the CDC declaration, which as it stands is the law of the land. So when we talk about, um, the, um, the, uh, the income, that's what the CDC, um, has said. Uh, when we talk about what the declaration requires, that is what the CDC has done. And they, it has its flaws from both, I'm sure from the landlord's perspective, but also from the tenant's perspective. But what it does do at its core, it recognizes the distinct public health issue that evictions pose during a crisis of this type. And I cannot tell you, um, you know, and I know Ms. Days talked about a lot of the anecdotal evidence that we've heard here and I'm, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna keep that going a little bit. Um, I talked to a teacher just, um, just yesterday, um, who, um, she, she's been a teacher, um, in the St. Louis County area for many years. She got COVID, became ill, wasn't able to work for some time, fell behind on her rent, um, and was evicted. And since she was evicted in the fall, she has been homeless. She has not been able to find any place because as soon as they pull up her record and they see that eviction, they see that she was, um, removed from her home because of, uh, because she fell behind on her rent, she can't, that's, it's full stop, conversation ends right there. So what this moratorium will do, it will give time to connect these people who need the help to the resources that are now there. Um, I don't know if a lot of people on the council, um, know how, I'm, I'm sure you know and appreciate how much more money is available now than there was under the CARES Act. This is, it's more than tripled the availability, um, of resources than there were under the CARES Act. So now that we have the safer program in place and the county has its ERAP program in place, I fully expect that, um, these landlords, um, who have been, um, unable to, to get their rents, that tide is going to start to turn. And this is not the time to open up the floodgates on evictions from a public health standpoint, um, from an economic standpoint, for the economic health of the county, this is not the time. Um, from the perspective, I believe it was Councilwoman, uh, Days, um, who may have said, um, we have a moral imperative, um, to really look at this issue and look at, um, what the risks are. So, you know, I'm, I was a bit surprised that, that this bill is so controversial considering that it models almost exactly the CDC, um, declaration, which, um, acknowledges the grave risks that evictions pose to communities. And I think what Mr. Gross was trying to say, um, earlier is that it, it to St. Louis County's credit, because we passed a moratorium, we have not seen the corresponding uptick in COVID-related issues and COVID, um, cases because we had a moratorium. But in cities that did not have the foresight to pass a moratorium, the way that St. Louis, uh, County Judge, uh, Burton did and the way that Presiding Judge Burleson did in the city, that we may have actually saved lives by passing this type of moratorium. So I encourage us to stay the course. Um, I do agree that there needs to be some changes to, um, the wording of that, um, subsection in the bill that was pointed out by Mr. Gross and Mr. Fourth. Um, and I'm more than happy to ask any questions, answer any questions that the council may have and I'll stop my comments there.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Jackson? Any questions or comments for Ms. Jackson? I, I do have one, uh, regarding the vaccines and I, I don't want to assume that because you live in an apartment complex that you cannot get a vaccine. Is, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
I haven't made any, um, statements, I would assume that vaccines are available to everyone, but I think that we know particularly in the St. Louis, um, region that, um, the vaccinations did not roll out as quickly as they should have. And, um, there is some backlog. The other thing that we know is that there is, um, particularly amongst the population who is likely to be impacted. We've all acknowledged that these, um, the eviction filings and the evictions that are pending are concentrated in lower-income black and brown communities. Um, and there is some mistrust, um, that we are still working through. Um, and, you know, I'm not a public health expert, so I'll stop my comments there because I've probably said more than I should about a subject matter.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that even with the vaccine hesitancy, uh, the, the, I don't know if the evictions or lack of housing is going to increase that or decrease that. I guess that's what I'm, I'm, I'm indicating here.
So I believe that's the, the study, the, the peer-reviewed study that, um, Mr. Gross is going to circulate to the, um, to the council. That's what that study found.
So the study found that if there is vaccine hesitancy, um, it does, it, it matters whether you live in a home or whether you live in an apartment complex, that hesitancy is somehow different?
No, the study didn't find that. The study was about the correlation between evictions and increasing, uh, rates of COVID infections.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments from, uh, for Ms. Jackson, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say Chairwoman Days, thank you for, um, adding them to the panel at the last minute. I do appreciate that.
Okay, so now we're going to go to the public comments, Diane.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, can.
Okay, our first public comment is from Charles Gorlneck. I would like you to know that I oppose an extension of the ban on evictions of delinquent tenants from demised premises. There has been so much government assistance to all persons due to the pandemic that everyone has the ability to pay their rent. If they fail to do so, it is only because of their recalcitrance. From Lloyd Alender. I am President of the St. Louis Real Estate Investors Association, Inc., and represent over three hundred small rental property owners in the St. Louis area. We are a not-for-profit organization that promotes providing well-maintained, safe, affordable housing in the St. Louis area. Many of our members provide rental houses and apartments in St. Louis County. For some, this is their main or only source of income. The past year has taken a toll on many of our members and their rental clients. We have counseled our members to be flexible with their rental clients that are struggling, but cooperating with new payment plans until they can regain their previous income streams. Many of our members, though, have clients that have abused the eviction stay as an excuse to get free rent and have not been cooperative at all. With these clients, the owners have no other course of action but to pursue legal action through the court system to recover their property. The past moratoriums on eviction have severely impacted these property owners. They have been looking forward to the end of the stay so they can take back their property and start to rebuild their lives. If the eviction stay is extended in St. Louis County, I fear that many of our members and other rental property owners will lose their property to bank foreclosures or sell out to larger out-of-town interests that will not maintain the property as well and of course raise rents to increase profit margins for their investors. These actions will further reduce the stock of affordable rental housing in St. Louis County. For these reasons, I urge the council to allow the court and legal system to resume their normal process of evictions so that local property owners can resume their livelihood of providing affordable rental housing in St. Louis County. And from April Lehenbauer, who is with Muskin Gorlneck Properties. I have sent in emails in the past representing myself and asking Sam Page and the council to open up the county to save our economy in St. Louis County. Today, I am reaching out to you as an area multi-site property manager begging you to not sign Bill 111. Landlords and property owners have had a rough thirteen months across the country, but partially in St. Louis County where no evictions have taken place in over a year. I understand that many people were put out of work for a while, but at the same time, unemployment compensation was boosted by the federal government, paying people in some cases more than they made working. Many of these people make, made no attempts to pay their rent. It was very frustrating as property managers to see the new sofas, big screen TVs, and new puppies being delivered while no rent was even attempted to be paid. The longer we let these people live without making them be accountable for just deciding not to pay rent or not work and take the boosted unemployment benefits, the worse off our economy is going to be in the long run. I oversee five hundred and eighty-eight units on four properties and the long-term delinquency is one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. That is a lot of money when we still have all our common area expenses such as sewer, water, trash, common area lighting to pay, not to mention salaries to maintenance and office staff to keep the properties running. The government is bleeding the business people dry to house the people that don't want to work. I realize there are some exceptions, but I am speaking about what I see on a day-to-day basis. What happens when we can't make our mortgage payments on the properties? Or the utilities get shut off for non-payment because everyone decided not to pay rent? Enough is enough. This has gone on entirely too long. We need to gain control of our units that aren't paying and be able to rent them to people who are able to pay again. At some point, this has to stop and weather needs to play a part too. Evictions in the spring are much better than evictions in the winter or even hot summer. I would suggest that maybe the money that is there to help would be used to help them find new places to live. And that is four hundred words, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
From Chris Clewine. My name is Chris, my wife Kim and I own several rental properties. Those properties are a financial investment for us and part of our retirement. However, COVID has created huge financial problems for us. We have several properties in St. Louis County where the tenants decided to quit paying because they cannot be evicted. In all of these cases, the tenants continue to go to work every day. They go to the store, they go to church, they continue on with their lives. However, they don't pay us a single penny. And during that time, we bear the brunt of their hardship. We have to continue to pay the mortgage and the taxes and the insurance. Also, if they call us for repairs, we have to continue making those repairs. They are taking advantage of us. Ninety-five percent of landlords are small mom and pop owners that cannot continue with this financial hardship. Vaccinations are readily available, don't punish the landlords. And our next comment is from Laura Jimmerson with Jimmerson Properties. As a small mom and pop landlord, I ask that you not pass an eviction stay. Small mom and pop landlords not only rely on rent, but also absorb costs when tenants do not pay. Many of us are now owed months and months of unpaid rent. This rent burden is impacting us in real ways. We are the faces on the other side of the mounting rent debt. We are facing this pandemic, knowing our financial futures and the well-being of our own families are in jeopardy. I agree with many that it really feels as though this global pandemic has been placed squarely on the shoulders of mom and pop landlords and it simply is not fair. Accordingly, I ask that you please do not pass an eviction stay. And from Jing Liu. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of our comments about the evictions. As a landlord, we are willing to work with tenants who lost jobs and arrange a payment plan. However, we noted that a few tenants have been taking advantage of the situation and abused the system. For example, we have a tenant who owns a company, does have income, but doesn't want to, but doesn't want to pay rent, even told us that they can stay in the property for free for several months without paying any rent if we file eviction. This has created very difficult situations for us because we have bills to pay and responsibilities to carry, including significantly increased property taxes, insurance, and sewer charges. We appreciate you consider resuming and maintaining normal eviction process. Thank you. And from Justy Aiken. I am a real estate investor and landlord. It is my understanding that the St. Louis County Council Committee is considering passing an eviction stay notice. While I understand the humanitarian underpinnings of this consideration, I would ask the council to consider the following before passing this notice. One, the landlord-tenant situation is predicated on a legally binding contract between two or more parties. The primary component of this binding contract is that in exchange for some amount of money given to the landlord by the tenant, the tenant is allowed to occupy the property. An eviction stay would alter the terms of this legally binding contract. The St. Louis County Council Committee is not a party to this legally binding contract. In my opinion, it therefore does not have the right to alter this contract. Number two, the financial impact of this pandemic is not limited just to the tenant. Most landlords are mom and pop organizations who are not getting wealthy off their investment properties. Generally, they are making just enough to be self-employed and cover their expenses with a small amount left over. For many investors, investing is not even a full-time operation, so there is a very real possibility that many investors have had their day job impacted by the pandemic and need their investment income now more than ever. Number three, landlords have quite a few expenses with their investment properties such as mortgages, insurance, maintenance, taxes, management company fees, listing fees, clean-out fees, application fees, legal fees, et cetera, for each property that they own. In addition to these expenses, landlords are people with families and have all the normal expenses of regular people such as home mortgage, insurance, taxes, food, clothing for their family members, cars, maintenance, medical bills, et cetera. How do you propose a landlord pays for these things if there's no revenue coming in? Those bills aren't going away, the mortgage company isn't giving a stay on paying the mortgage, and the county isn't giving any grace period for paying taxes. How is a landlord going to cover these expenses if an eviction stay is put in place and there's no revenue coming in? If you really want to help people figure out a way to get the economy moving and people back to work. From Neil Rose with Blue Shark Homes. The current job market and federal government's injection of stimulus dollars have been significant enough to stimulate jobs lost to COVID-19. Consumers' bank balances are at all-time highs and consumers are not borrowing money like normally as reported in multiple quarterly bank earnings reports these days. More consumers will increase their borrowing as additional jobs continue to return, causing even more renters to switch over to being first-time homeowners. Imposing a stay on evictions will allow those who are not working to secure their future and avenue, to secure their future and avenue to drain opportunities from these renters who are trying to secure their future as a first-time homeowner. This is because they will be occupying properties that could be freed up for first-time homeowners to purchase or those who are finally securing solid employment and ready to move out on their own into their first rental home. These opportunities are blocked by imposing government edicts like being proposed today. Please let the free market flourish like our founding fathers designed our economy to operate. Please do not impose additional eviction restrictions as larger government is not the answer. And from Kelly Anne Radetick. I work for a company which manages five apartment communities. Unfortunately, the problems we have had with residents involves those who have not truly been impacted financially by COVID. It protects those who are in it for a free ride and it leaves the landlords having to pay their mortgages without any true protection or assistance. The eviction moratoriums do not provide for immediate financial relief or any protection for the landlords who have to suffer residence who are refusing to pay rent under the protection of the moratorium laws. Additionally, the law should not protect anyone who is turned down for monetary assistance, who refuses to get a job or look for employment, or who does not use the funds to pay their rent. Madam Chair, that is all the public comments.
Thank you very much, Diane. Um, and before we come to an end, I got a And before we come to an end, I got a couple of things I want to, want to say here. And as we look at Bill 111, we want to make sure that this is a bill that where we are not wound up, will not wind up in litigation because that won't help anybody. We will be sitting in court, and then the two and a half months of the moratorium, if that's passed, will be done. People will still be evicted. And so I just don't think that that's a good end to this. I would strongly suggest that the sponsor of the bill, he's not here, and I'm sure he will check in with some of us about what happened today, but consider some kind of a substitute that will take into consideration some of the comments and concerns that have been expressed today. I think on both sides, we did, we did say that there were some issues with the bill that we need to look at into. I would also, going to reiterate, the council is supposed to get back to us with several questions that were, that I think it was Councilwoman Fitch asked. And so we need to get that information as we move forward with considering this legislation. And before you hit your social media, all of us need to consider and see how we can balance this, this issue that we're looking at. Some new things have come online that were not there before. And I think that we need to understand that this council is not looking to send anybody out and to have anybody homeless. I think that this is, we need to look at a balanced approach. As I mentioned in the introduction, is to figure out how we can make this happen so that we don't have a lot of evictions and then we don't have landlords without any tenants. Because I think, one, it doesn't give us any solace to have either one of those to happen. I would truly like to have the tenants to avail them, looking at the 600 evictions that we have there, and maybe the advocates that are here can look at that number of 600 and see what you can assist with in that sense. They have been in the queue. They are in the queue already. And maybe there's something that the advocates here can help them with, looking at the, what is the name of the forum? The Eviction Protection Declaration. If they don't know about it, then they can't fill it out. And so that would be left up to the advocates to see how much that would assist in this process. I do think that the courts are trying their best to help in terms of looking at these issues. But, you know, they have to also go ahead and do their jobs as well. We also have to remember that affordable housing is at a premium. And so if you have folks that are not able to get into affordable housing, you could, you could also have people that are unhoused. I'll put it like that. And so we really have to make sure that if the, if the people decide that they're not going to rent anymore, they're not going to rent to, you know, low-income people, then that will also exacerbate the homeless problem. As I mentioned earlier, looking at that eviction protection declaration is something I think that we need to make sure is there. And also work with our department that's trying diligently to get this information out to as many people as possible. And so let's, let's consider all of these things as we move forward or not with this piece of legislation. And I would see if there's anyone else that had any closing comments at this particular point.
Councilwoman Dayz, may I just add one thing? Because several of the public comments were about what landlords could do to prevent foreclosure. And I just would like to note that there is a national eviction foreclosure that goes through the end of June. There's also foreclosure assistance that is available to property owners. So I would encourage, I know our, the landlord advocates are gone, but maybe some of them are still listening. And just as tenants need to understand what protections are available to them under the CDC moratorium, I think some landlords, especially the smaller mom-and-pop landlords, may not have full knowledge of what programs are available on the national level to protect them. Because there is assistance available, there are programs to protect them.
And thank you for that because as you as an advocate and as you deal with your, the renters, then perhaps that information you can avail to the landlords as well. And I think that's very well said, that there is some assistance on both sides for this, even on the national level. So if there are no other questions or comments at this particular time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, one quick comment I want to add to. Obviously, time is of the essence here for all parties involved. So, you know, while I heard you say we need to go back into this bill, take a balanced approach, you know, we need to be mindful of the clock ticking here because, again...
I understand that because if, if we're in litigation for whatever, you know, that's just going to set us back as well. So, yeah, that's why I said that. I recognize that the time is of the essence. So let's, let's try to figure this out as quickly as we possibly can to, we're not in any of those situations.
Right. And I also, I look forward to your ideas about how you, you think we might be able to strike a balanced approach in this legislation. I think that's the place we're in right now. If, if, if there is a need for folks to, like you said, balance it a little bit more for the purpose of this bill, I'm curious what that looks like and welcome those ideas.
Certainly. All right. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you very much, and I do appreciate your time on this Friday evening. Take care and stay safe.